Good evening. It's nice to see you all here. Would you please bow at me for a word of prayer before we start our meeting? We come here tonight united in our work for the city and the community we call home. We are grateful for all the citizens who volunteer their time and talents, and for our city staff who choose to work here and share their knowledge, talents, and experience. May we be mindful in our thoughts, reasonable in our deliberations, and careful with our decisions. Amen.
Amen.
I'll now call a meeting of September 15th, 2022, order. And I would ask our city secretary if we have anyone that has signed up for open forum?
No ma'am.
Okay. Then we'll move on to agenda item number three. A council member would like to remove anything from the consent agenda, and if not, cheer and entertain a motion for approval.
What motion do you approve the consent agenda as written?
All seconded. Okay. Moved and seconded, it will be approved the consent agenda as written. If no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion passes unanimously. Our regular agenda. A, receipt of a report, will the discussion give staff direction on matters incident related to the issuance and sale of City of Nacogdoches, Texas general obligation refunding bonds taxable Series 2020. That would be the whole thing. Pam, are you going to introduce Mr. Martin, or Mr. Martin should come on? Okay.
Mayor, council, tonight with us, we have John Martin with Hilltop Securities. They're our financial advisors. And then he's going to be presenting to y'all some information on the possibility of refunding our 2012 refunding bonds. And he's got some good news to share with y'all about how much money we are having potential of saving with the issuance of these bonds. So if he's ready to allow me to come in, y'all, this is it.
Good evening, Mr. Martin. It's good to see you.
Good to see you, Mayor. Thanks for having me. I'll take this off when I speak, if that's okay.
Yes.
The city has an opportunity to refund some of its debt for some fairly significant savings. These would be the general obligation refunding bonds Series 2012. They're actually not callable until 2021. So this is what would be called an advance refunding, where you're refunding the bonds in advance at their call date. So we're about a year away from that. So as a result, these need to be done on a taxable interest rate other than we typically issue taxes at a box municipalities to. But normally that, you get concerned because you're saying, well, those rates are going to be higher than the taxes. Unfortunately, yes, they are, but taxable rates are so crazy, all interest rates are so low right now, that we're, it's an opportunity to take advantage of that. So we've updated some figures, and we feel like the savings to the city is roughly $150,000 a year. That'd be primarily, as with these most figure bonds, primarily repay from the enterprise fund, from your proprietary water sewer fund. So that would be a direct impact on helping, on helping your water sewer fund through this as a result of the refunding. The bonds go out to 2034. We would not be proposing to extend the debt at all, keep it the same, just to cash flow savings, again, roughly $150,000 a year. The bonds are scheduled to be sold here in a few weeks. So at that point in time, the interest rate will be locked in. What we're asking tonight is for the council to give us permission to move forward as a result of the bond ordinance there that has certain parameters and that states that if the, really, if the market were to move away from us in the next few weeks, then we'll put this on hold and come back and look at it later. Ms. Kerbo's done a great job working with the Brady Agency, we had a call with them, and with the United Writers Council as well. And everything's teed up, and we're in great shape. We just need to keep our fingers crossed that these interest rates stay low for a couple more weeks. Have any answering questions you may have?
Okay. If you'll allow me, just for a moment, is there anyone here attending the meeting that would like to speak to this, ask any questions? Okay. Questions or comments?
I have one question. Does this extend our obligation further?
No, the original 2012 issue was to mature in 2030, we could have the exact same month to mature. So you're just, you're trading off interest rates that were close to 4% with rates that'll be an average of between 1.5% to 2%.
For our rating right now in the market, what do you see as the delta between tax-free and what would the future?
So tax-exempt bonds and taxable bonds, if we were to do this issue out of 2034 on a tax-exempt basis, we're showing you 1.52% on a tax basis. It would probably be maybe 35 basis points lower. Probably it'd be above 1, but certainly probably between 1 and 1 are what we're showing.
Thank you.
Further out you go, this is only at 34, further out you go, larger than square meters.
Is there any downside that I'm missing?
The, no, I mean, it's a bird in the hand. The only possible downside would be if we pulled the trigger now and we say, oh shucks, you know, a couple of years from now, if we, if interest rates just were to drop further, we could, we could say that, well, we should have waited.
Okay.
But it's a bird in the hand, you know? It's like refinancing your home, right? Do you, you know, do you wait till mortgage rates are lower, or do we do it now? So it's very similar concept.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. So are we going to, if council wants to vote on this, is he authorized? Pam, are you the authorized city person, or is it the city manager?
City manager.
Okay. City manager. Okay. So if council, if you all want to discuss any aspect of this, we can. If you are ready to make a motion, or in favor of it, you would make the motion giving our city manager the authority to work with Mr. Martin and Hilltop Securities. On this.
I'll make a motion that we give our city manager the authority to work with Hilltop on the reissuing, or what should we call this, refinancing, refinancing number 2012 bonds. I have said.
Moved and seconded. It's a further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you very much, Mr. Martin. Appreciate it. Moving on to B, public hearing, hold a public hearing and receive citizen input on the fiscal year 2020-2021 proposed budget. And Ms. Kerbo, you would go first.
Mayor, council, again, tonight, we're going to have a public hearing on the proposed 2021 budget. It's settled here. Just going to go back over real quickly. Tonight, you actually have before you two options. We'll, we'll discuss the property tax rates in the property tax public hearing a little further, but the options before you for the, for the proposed budget. Option one includes the budget that's built on a proposed tax rate of 63 cents per $100 valuation. And option number two is a budget that is built on a proposed tax rate of 61.6 cents per $100 valuation, which is the calculated known revenue rate for, for the fiscal year. As far as expenditures go, they're identical under both options. The only difference in option one and option two is the $250, $250,000 differential in revenue in the property tax line. Other than that, there are no, no differences in option one and option two as far as the budget is concerned. Again, this budget includes the fifth year five of the five-year water rate increase. There is no rate changes in sewer sanitation or the street maintenance fee proposed in the budget for 20 and 21. This is just a short on operating only. Option one is $26.43 million in operating revenue. Expenditures are 26.165. Option, option one is the, the tax rate of 63 cents. Option two, and there's the tax rate of 61.6 cents. You'll notice that expenditures are identical. The revenues are $250,000 less at 26.18 for the general fund. For utility fund, option one and option two are identical. No, no changes there. And so these are, these are the same numbers that, that you've seen at the, at the prior meeting, as well as sanitation. There are no changes in option one or option two. So you're looking at, whoops, that's the end of it. You're looking at literally the only difference between option one and option two is the, the difference in the property texture. And so with that, I will turn it over to you for the public hearing.
Thank you so much. And so we will now open the public hearing on the proposed budget. Is there anyone here that wants to speak for the proposed budget as it has been proposed? Is there anyone that would like to speak against the proposed budget as it has been proposed? None. I will now close the public hearing, and we will move to item C, a public hearing, or I'm sorry, the council, have any questions or comments? Item C, public hearing, hold a public hearing and receive citizen input on fiscal year 2020-2021 proposed tax rate.
Mayor, council, once again. So tonight, the public hearing on proposed tax rate, we're going to show you the values that we provide, our assessed, total assessed value for 2020 is 1.1, well, let me just say this, because this is hard, $1,781,199,182. This includes a little over $9.6 million, a new property that was added to the tax roll this year. Our prior year tax rate was 61.4 cents per thousand, I mean, per $100 valuation. Our calculated no new revenue tax rate, which was originally known as the effective tax rate, is 61.6 cents. And the voter approval rate previously known as the rollback rate was 0.63384 per $100 valuation. And those are all the calculated rates for the year. Before you, you have two options. One is the proposed tax rate of 63 cents per $100 valuation, which generates $365,000 in new revenue. And option two, which is the no new revenue tax rate of 61.6 cents per $100 valuation, which generates $115,000 in new revenue. I think the city manager wants to kind of elaborate on, on the two proposals before you, so I'll let him do that before we start the, the public hearing.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, ma'am.
Yes.
Mayor, council, all right, this is our, your city manager. You know, last meeting, you had a last council meeting. You know, I made the sort of surprise announcements that we could actually look at and some options. And so you all have some, some very valid concerns because it's information that was new to you all. And so after reflecting on that, you know, certainly this is information that you all need. To be honest with you, talking with Pam Kerbo, you know, this is my, I believe, my 33rd day on the job. So coming into the city, I will tell you, I would never recommend a city manager to start a job in the very last, the, the home stretch of the budget process, because all, all kinds of questions come about. And so what I will tell you, though, the staff has worked very hard this last number of months without a permanent city manager, working with the fact that they had, certainly with the pandemic, did not add any elements of stability, because it's a, it's an up and down, on a monthly basis, when you look at your sales taxes, up and down expectations, because you're hoping for the best, but you're preparing for the worst. And so fortunately for an analogy, our sales tax has come in very strong. So kudos to our, to our local businesses and folks shopping here in Nacogdoches to keep it whole. Those things are working. We've also had the opportunity to have some increases that were unplanned as part of revenues on development fees. And staff has held in line with the base, and throughout the summer, it's just, really just kind of holding their own and kind of super expensive. So as a result, as we kind of trans, as we kind of continued through the budget process over the last few weeks, it really came down to, because of these situations, my question to Pam is, if you don't need it, do we need a tax rate increase? And when it all, when it was all set and done, it was the answer is, it's not needed. But it was built, the budget was modeled around that based on the information at the hand. And so knowing that we had all the way up until the middle of September through this process, I'm just, if you don't need it, you don't ask for it. And so I think based on staff, what staff's been able to do, you all have some concerns about, about areas of community and organization, and we believe that we can address that with, with the budget that we have in place. And so again, you have both options. As Pam mentioned, the only difference is between option one and option two, it's just at the end of the day, it's the revenue stream. And so, but it does not change the expenditure levels, it does not change the programing levels that are budgeted, and we're able to offer, if we need no new revenue rate or 2012 rate. I'll be happy to answer any questions, if there's any comments that should be had.
I believe first, we need to conduct a public hearing, and then we'll come back, because I believe we do have some questions. And so I will now open the public hearing for anyone who would like to speak against a proposed tax rate increase. Is there anyone here that would like to speak for a tax increase? Yes, Ms. Smith. I know. Good evening. We get to see you once a year, don't we?
Yeah, I came, I came in here thinking this would be packed with people who are opposed to a property tax increase, and there's no one here. Oh, I'm back again. I think I've been to the city council meeting every year for now, for three years in a row. But I'm just, I'm here to support the tax increase. And the only complaint I have about it is, I don't think it's enough. Going back, if we go back a couple centuries, in property taxes, historically, property taxes were the primary revenue source for government. And probably the reason was, though I was around late in the hundreds, probably the reasoning was that the people that most before to support our governments through taxes or revenue of any source was the people that were the big property owners. One good thing to do in Nacogdoches, though, is the reason I was here the last two times, was we have a regressive tax that probably most of the citizens do not know about. And Ms. Fisher, you were not here two years ago when I did the spiel. But we got the same problem, in my opinion. We've got rates on our proprietary funds, enterprise funds, if you want to call them that, primary water sewer, that are probably unreasonable. And we're funding a lot of money out of those funds into the general operating revenues of the City of Nacogdoches. After I made my presentation two years ago, Mr. Jeffries and I had a, had a long conversation, and he admitted that, yes, we're putting too much money in there, but we don't have any other source for revenue. You do have another source for revenue, you're looking at it right now. The, maybe a little bit of argument on how much, but in my opinion, it's way too much, it's several million dollars. I think, Ms. Kerbo, I didn't correct you on wrong, but I read a report from you in the latest one, maybe a couple weeks ago, your opinion maybe was a billion and a half. Is that what you pulled there?
Million and a half is probably what we, we did.
So we're both agree that we're putting money in there that probably shouldn't be put in here. We would disagree on the amount. I think it's more than a billion and a half. Primarily, it's the water rates. And in the process of, I'm going through some, see the ordinances. I found the last ordinance that was passed relative to water rates, and it was passed in August of 2016. And I was kind of taken aback when I lived, the women are parrot, leading into this water ordinance, and I'm going to read it. You guys, the city council, although most of you were not on the city council at that time, or some of you weren't. Whereas the city has determined that the water sewer rates as fixing ordinance number 1658314, March 14, 2014 ordinance, as at this time inadequate to cover all operation and maintenance costs for water production and distribution in sewage, collection, and treatment. That statement is so far out of reason. I mean, we were shoving millions of dollars out of the water sewer fund, putting it into the general operating fund, at the same time passing an ordinance that says we need higher rates because there wasn't enough, enough revenue to support the water sewer fund. That makes no sense, we're sure. But I have a copy of it here, and I kind of cherry picked some things out of it. To give you an example, I happen to have a 1-inch meter for my sprinkler system in my yard. And I have to pay a flat fee for that every month. In fiscal year 2017, I paid $19.88 a month. It's my flat fee for like October, November, December, January, February, March, when I'm not even operating. $19.88. In this ordinance, beginning October 1, for fiscal year 2021, I will pay $33.13 a month. That is a 67% increase in that rate in a period of four years. If you've got a 1.5-inch meter, the rate for the four years, over the four-year period, has gone from $30.92 a month to $66.25 a month, a 114% increase. How many of you have increased, had to pay some, got an increase of 114% increase in the last four years? And these were all fixed, unless you decided to change ordinance. The rate for household water use, and most households would fall in a category of 10,000 to 30,000 gallons, probably somewhere in there, 12,000 gallons a month is the average household use. The rate increased for 2021, 2.7%. That's a 10% increase from what we were paying in 2017, which is when you all passed the ordinance. For irrigation water, my sprinkler system, has gone from $4.89 a thousand in a normal new range use, 30,000 to 75,000 gallons a month, gone from $49.54. That's a 13% increase in the last four years. For heavy industry users, I'm glad I'm not a heavy industry user, because they have gone up from 2017 to 2021, a 33% increase in water rate. Now, these were done at a time before $100,000 out of the water sewer fund into the general operating fund of the City of Nacogdoches. Now, what does all that mean? It means that we've got a regressive, hidden tax on the citizens of Nacogdoches. Mr. Bolton, I'm going to pick on your Southeast District work. This regressive tax, the water rate, probably hit those people worse than anybody else in Nacogdoches. It's costing $75 to $80 a month for the average household usage. And I'm talking about average household, where you've got two people, three people, four people, maybe you've got a washer and dryer, washing machine, whatever, but you're going to fall in that category of $75, $80 a month. And that's tough, and we're fixing it well some more. Anyway, going to sum this up, once again, first time through the hour, the city council is to stop increasing proprietary fund revenue to fund the general operations of the city. You're putting a significant funding effort on the backs of people in the city that can least afford it to these property owners that have valuable real estate, or have valuable real estate. Your easy water sewer rates as a regressive tax to build it probably more politically expedient than increasing property taxes. I mean, I know what would happen in this meeting is you increase property taxes enough to, in one fell swoop, wipe out the transfer funds from proprietary funds, you probably have this repacked. I understand the problem. My solution, if I were in charge, I wouldn't increase water sewer fund rates any from now to the future. I would change the ordinance that we got on rates going up for 2021, but I would hold them steady, and I would make some progress in increasing property taxes every year until we can get rid of the problem, remove the problem. And I don't think folks presentants of the city are aware of the problem. Okay, that's enough.
Thank you, Mr. Kerbo. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
I'm sorry?
I was asking if there was anyone else that would like to speak. Okay, I will now close the public hearing. We are going to move to item D, and I will recuse myself and allow our Mayor Proten to take over for item D.
Mayor, council, Mayor Proten, council. Tonight, before you, this item is actually to pull the Boys and Girls Funding Agreement from their line item from the budget, so that we can adopt it separately from the budget. The employment of Mayor Brophy at the Boys and Girls Club precipitates the need for this. Last year was the first year that we did this, and so what we'll ask you now is to, to review the, the line item budget is $70,000, that's the new contracted amount that, that we're under with the Boys and Girls Club, and approve it separately from the, the big budget. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Is there anyone here that's opposed to the removal of the $70,000 line item from the budget, in item, in, in item D? Anyone have an opinion about the approval, removing line items, $70,000 of Boys and Girls? Okay, so do we want to?
We have a motion.
All right, and we have a motion to remove, to approve, remove the line items from the Boys and Girls Club, $70,000.
I'll make a motion that we approve plan budget for Boys and Girls Club funding agreement fiscal year beginning October 1, 2020, ending September 30, 2021, providing that said expenditures for said fiscal year shall be made in accordance with said budget, unless otherwise authorized by ordinance adopted by city council.
Yes, I have.
We have a motion to approve, and a second. All right, please.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. Item E, consider ordinance of the City of Nacogdoches, Texas approving and adopting our annual budget for fiscal year beginning October 2, 2020, and ending September 30, 2021. I would like to remind council, this will be a roll call vote, depending on the motion of the second. So Ms. Kerbo, please go ahead.
Yes, Mayor, council. Again, this is the 2021 budget. There are two options before you. Option one, which is based on 63 cents per $100 valuation tax rate, and option two, which is based on the 61.6 known revenue tax rate. I will be happy to answer any additional questions. It's kind of strange that we've just had the public hearing, so I'm not real sure what else you want me to, to enlighten you on, but I will, I will answer any questions that you may have come across.
And I might add that they could also ask our city manager.
Yes.
Okay. So council in person. I know we have some questions. Who would like to go first? Hold up. Okay.
Dr. Smith, I know that I wasn't around a couple of years ago when you first came with your presentation, but you speaking to this is not the first I've heard about this. I've heard from other people voicing their concerns, and so I appreciate you coming. And my question is, for our city manager, having come from experience in city management in different cities, what have you seen as best practices in this?
Well, I have heard some comments about the annual transfers being too high. Certainly haven't had the opportunity to review all of those, but finding structure, but certainly will. You know, the best practices, a lot of times what's been done when these things come up, and it doesn't hurt ever so often to have a thorough review, and whether it's hiring a firm, an outside firm that can come in and just do a true-up of cost or general administration. There are some support functions that the general fund does help support, but it's human resources, finance, just some of the other internal service functions that we have throughout, just kind of back-house functions per se that support the utility funds. You don't want a utility fund that has its own separate staff, because that's very efficient. So, certainly does it help, our citizens, it's hurt to have an outside firm come in and do some analysis and determine, you know, how you would restructure this, and also give a phase-in plan, because as Ms. Curvo mentioned at least last meeting, and I mean, Ms. Fisher, you had mentioned about how to do that, it's very difficult to do it all in one swoop, and as you all know, we sit in the two, there's only so much ability to raise in property taxes or from a responsibility, you can only go so far in projected sales tax receipts are going to be. And you want to make sure that you do those with a bit of science too, but also too considering what the economic conditions are. So, my recommendation, while I don't have an exact number or figure or percentage, my recommendation would be that staff go through an operational review of certain, all city operations, certainly we can do it the same way for utility funds, and see what are the best practices for a city of our size that has the university component, that is a county seed, that has a large presence with taxing then properties. And because we're not just like another city, it's very different, because you typically know the cities that have universities where they have a higher presence in utilities, because a lot of these taxing properties are taxing in. So, a city like New York, we have two universities, fifty thousand students at full capacity, and so we run it, didn't ramp, didn't just pull it. And a lot of that is because so much property is a county seed, large state presence, large county presence, large school district, city, and state university presence, is that you can, the general taxable properties can't just handle it solely on property taxes. So, you see cities like Lubbock, Texas A&amp;M, Bryan College Station, Austin, San Antonio, certainly the city of them have these utilities, because that is a way where those taxing then properties do bring revenue into the city, because they are taxing in. So, again, ultimately, what I would recommend is looking at bringing in a firm, help us look at our operations, see what those costs should be, develop some best practices, and phase in the project, and we'd bring those options to you and see how you want to phase those in at the time. I just don't think we could do it in one year, but there could be some options where it can be phased in over a quarter, so a number of years.
Right, and if we did the tax increase, it'd be what, three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, is that what we said, difference versus the one point five million that we would have to make up from the transfer?
Well, and that would be just for this year, because it's based on the current appraisal. So, next year's appraisals could be that much better, or it could be that much worse, so the grade would just reflect based on the appraisal.
So, I get the phase in, I just, and I appreciate Dr. Smith's explanation particularly, calling it a regress of hitting tax and how it hits low-income families worse. I hear that very loudly, and that really bothers me. And so, I would like for us to do what you suggested that we do, so that we more closely, we're more responsibly transferring money, so that the taxpayers who are getting hit the hardest don't get hit so hard on it. So, then, sort of switching gears, not really, the Central Heights water money, where does that, where does that come out of in the budget?
I don't know.
Okay. Last year, during, I think it was during the budget process too, we discussed, was it during the budget process, we discussed the Central Heights water issue, and from what I recall, former city manager, Jim Jeffers, explained it as, you know, this was an action by council ten years ago that we're sort of saddled with now, and unless somebody buys it off of us, right? We, I think that that's what it was, you know, we're saddled with it. It seems like that financial burden, since it comes from utilities, is sort of tied to all of this. And so, in that sense, instead of just talking about, is there anything that can be done about the Central Heights water issue and subsidizing that, the city manager just subsidizing that, if we can be more intentional about looking into, into what, if anything, can be, can be done with that burden? And then, my last one, Mayor.
No, please, go ahead.
The, the little room that we've been able, that you guys have been able to find in the budget, in order to be able to propose a second option, has something to do with the vacant positions that we haven't filled yet, right? And there are six of those, is that right?
Well, there are six, there are six positions that were, believe that were, that were frozen.
Those were the, there were six frozen positions.
Okay.
Those aren't being carried over into the, into the next budget year.
Okay, and that's going to be for the next budget year, and then what, could you speak a little bit to your plan in terms of reevaluating?
Sure. I'd be happy to, you know, as I mentioned, this is my thirty-third birthday, it kind of comes and goes. Today seems like it's two days building on one. It's been one of those dates, and so, so I'll add a little bit more to that. But, you know, I've been here just a little child every month, and so I think, yeah, I've been kind of on this listening tour per se, listening to staff, sort of visiting with you all, in the rest of the community, I still have a long way to go. And I think it's only proven as I'm working with staff over these last few days, and hopefully over these next several months, is just kind of look at overall operation review, and just really kind of look at it with a critical eye, and see where areas, where are we fully utilizing our resources? Again, whether it's human capital, our monies, our equipment, our consultants, whatever they need, are we fully utilizing those components? And my ask would be that before we start adding more positions to the budget or refilling some of those vacancies that were frozen, that we go and allow me and staff, and Pam and our department heads to, to really just operationally look at, how are we, how are we really operating? Are we operating as efficient as effective as we can? Are there some things that we can, I don't have anything specific that I can say, aha, I have something identified, but I know they're staying there. And so, my ask is, before we start adding positions back in, that were frozen from the current budget year into next year, that we kind of go through that review process. Part of that will be certain utilities and other operations, et cetera. And then, come to you all over the next number of months, you have this next budget year, and say and ask, you know, I think we've been able to find some sufficient savings, we've been able to reposition or repurpose staff and our resources, and if we can't, and we've done everything we can, I would, would not be at all hesitant to be able to say, we need to add some of these staff numbers back, maybe not in the way that were, in which they were frozen, maybe in different capacities. That would be my ask of you all. And again, just give me an opportunity to kind of do a thorough review, and come back with some options or recommendations overall for council.
Thank you. You have a say, Mr. Holden?
Well, more, given our comment personally, the annual fund transfer, this is normal practice in most cities, would you say?
It is, but it just, cities vary in a different way, how they calculate it, and again, it just depends on what their administrative costs are, and how they move some of those monies to cover that cost, so it's just not fully worn on the general fund, because utilities do bear the standards, whether it's my salaries, the salaries, the finance department, human resources, things of that nature. There is that, that component that is worn by the general fund, the general fund should be, should be reimbursed or something.
I mean, even in, though this pandemic, there's a lot of cities that, most of them, Nacogdoches really have a high property tax rate, you know, there are a lot of cities that's a low income tax rate, even twenty-four, twenty-five percent, and they still doing a fund transfer, they do.
I'll touch on all three of those fun things. So, first on the transfers, I love the idea of bringing in a consultant to get some sort of a tiered schedule, so they can see what the best practices are. One thing I'd love to run parallel with that is to figure out where are we, where do we stack up, market rates, water-wise, otherwise, what's the goal? Like to get down to a maturity best practice, based on, I mean, like you said, there's a lot of variables, so I'd like to see those run in tandem if possible. Are we, are we way more expensive than Lufkin, Tyler, Huntsville, similar-sized communities, similar markets? And then on the Central Heights, I'd love to echo what Ms. Fisher mentioned, I'd love to look into that, get a little bit of a game plan there, because it is kind of this big ugly thing in the cloth, and I'd love to figure out what kind of a liability, what kind of exposure do we have there? And then, on the two options, my biggest concern, why I didn't speak up last week, was we've had this sense that they're, that we are underpaying, we're not at market, which you've addressed across the board for the city. My sense is with us having some attrition and firing, firing police, I'd really like to make sure that we are competitive and a little bit beyond competitive, to make sure that we are able to bring in the very best in both of those. And in our discussion earlier today, you mentioned that is absolutely a kind of the core, so that was more of a comment than a question, so I appreciate that.
I would, those, we did talk about that in the last meeting, I would like me to address that just very briefly, because that was something we did right now.
On the, on the...
Public safety, yes.
Oh, safety, certainly. You know, as I mentioned last week, you know, we're going through a salary survey, a contact consultant that did that, so it's a lot to do, and so they, that's the principle of the work. We've been in the process of looking at how do those Nacogdoches stack up with comparative cities, and again, Nacogdoches, with the exception of being left in the sort of standalone communities, difficult. We're not a metropolitan area where we're able to just thick and choose these cities that are just across our borders, it's just not, it's not possible. So, it's a little different than what you can see in your metropolitan areas, but long and short, it is, we are low on our public safety rates, and what this budget allows you to do as part of the place order for implementing the compensation plan, is to bring us to market. Now, one thing I would suggest as part of this process is, because we are starting out and we're ending the budget year with a number of vacancies in the police department, a few in our department, and then we'll be starting fiscal year with those vacancies as well, my suggestion would be, as opposed to allowing those salaries to sit there idle, and just sort of, in essence, kind of savings, that we put those monies to use, and try to positively affect employees that we already have in our employment, and also find a way to draw in the talent that we need to have to refill, refill those vacancies that we have in those, in those departments. I think it allows us to be more competitive, allow prospective boards, prospective police officers, firefighters to want to look at Nacogdoches, and hopefully make this a long-term target.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
The revenue from the property tax rate increase, do you have a purpose for that? Do you have it designated for any?
Based on the point six-three cents, no, sir, we would have just basically would have gone into fund balance, it would have been into fund balance. There was no, at this point, there was nothing programmed, unless directed by City Council program, so there was nothing that staff had programmed for.
But there's a fund in for pay increase for employees in this, but...
The monies are there, even with the lower tax rate to do the market adjustments, and that would be a bit disgusting. And then those, and then those vacancies utilize those dollars that will be carrying into the next budget year to help build a little bit more in some of those frontline public safety areas.
So, thank you very much. The chair will entertain a motion, and please keep in mind that when you make a motion, you will need to either declare for approving or adopting annual budget option one or option two.
I'll make a motion. The option two, I'd move the property tax rate be set by the adoption of the tax rate of...
Okay, just a moment. This, this is item E, so it is approving the annual budget.
Good.
And will be the tax rate, so pardon me for interrupting. It is still, do we still need to say option two?
Yes.
For the budget?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we approve option two for agenda item number or letter E for the budget. Second.
Okay, moved and seconded, that we adopt agenda item E with the, with option two, and it's been moved and seconded. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Oh, I need to do a roll call vote. Holden?
Aye.
And Hens?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
Brophy?
Aye.
And then, item F is to consider the ordinance ratifying and setting the tax rate.
Again, you have two options before you. Option one, which is the sixty-three cent tax rate, and option two, which is the sixty-one point six cent tax rate. Any questions, I'll be happy to answer them, or Mario will, I'm sure. He'll be, he'll be through.
Sure. Council, any other additional questions? Okay, then chair will entertain a motion, and also that would need to be which option, and then worded correctly.
I'll try this one more time.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we pass agenda letter F under option two, and with specific or accurate, I'd move the property tax rate be set by the adoption of the tax rate of sixty-one point six cents per hundred dollar valuation, which is the calculated non-revenue tax rate. Second.
Moved and seconded, if no further discussion. Holden?
Aye.
Mr. Hens?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Aye.
And Brophy, also aye. Motion passes. We will now be going into executive session, so thank you very much for attending a nice meeting. You are welcome to the debate outside. And it is now six twenty pursuant to Texas Government Code section five-five-one point zero seven four. Okay, pursuant to Texas Government Code section five-five-one point zero seven four, it is still September fifteenth, twenty twenty, it is six fifty-six P.M. Council has returned from executive session, and no action was taken. So, that concludes our meeting of September fifteenth, twenty twenty. Thank you for attending. Thank you for attending.